I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For real, please.
Bike men?
Present.
They can't hear us.
I hit two hundred.
Easy here.
Present.
Frost.
Present.
Echis. Frye.
Present.
Gross.
Present.
Schroller.
Present.
Trom.
Present.
We have a clap. With no sound.
Meeting happens without sound, doesn't make it pick a sound.
It's way over here, I must've hit it hard.
Meeting happens in the woods.
Here there.
Speaks in the woods, it's still nagging or something like that.
I haven't heard that one, but I like it.
Yeah.
I'm gonna quote you on that.
Yeah, don't quote me.
Put it on the internet.
Yeah. Okay, the first item is the approval of minutes from the October 10th meeting. I just have one amendment on page two of the minutes. The acronym on number five should be ULDC. Did anybody else have any amendments? I would entertain a motion for the amended minutes in.
Move to approve as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Alright. The first item will be pinning our corporals. Chief Ackerman?
Good evening. We decided with the new promotions, we're gonna have a pinning of the officers and they'll bring somebody up with them. I'll have the mayor come up and she'll hand them their certificate of their promotion and I believe the advocates can take a picture of it as well for the newspaper. I'll call them up each individually. James Leece?
Congratulations.
This is his mother, she's gonna pin his corporal.
There's no blood on that. It doesn't count, it doesn't count.
Should be pinned by her husband, Cruzy Deputy for the county. James and Sol and the mayor on one side.
Congratulations.
Alright, the first item is public comments. If you are not on the agenda, please come to the podium, give your name, your ward, your address, and you have up to five minutes.
No sound again.
You must wait.
Hang on.
Too much clapping.
I was probably clapping.
Yeah.
One hand.
We're back.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Cruzy, the Chairperson of the Convention and Tourism Committee. I have three things to talk to you about regarding black squirrels on parade, which is Friday night. If you are on Facebook, and if you have not liked our Facebook page, please go to Visit Marysville. Every day we have a special post getting people excited about Friday's event. Today's post has already reached over 5,000 people, and so we hope that happens every day. Every day we're highlighting some of the black squirrel merchandise that is for sale at our downtown merchants, and so today we were featuring the black squirrel coffee, which is featured at Reflections Hallmark. So if you haven't done that, please do so. The second thing, I would like to ask the city council, or we would like to ask the city council, to be the grand marshals for Friday night's parade. If you read the history of how we got to black squirrel night, the city council and city officials were the ones who really instigated this, and it would be an honor if you would all serve as our grand marshals and ride in the float that will feature the squirrel that will go to City Park.
So you have the truck and the flatbed for the squirrel?
We do.
And will all of us bid? Is this a?
Yes.
Is it the big trailer?
It's a trailer built for all of them, yes.
Okay. And so where, shall we meet you at?
In the 1000 block, you'd be first in the parade after the MHS marching band, so meet us at 5:30 ish.
Okay.
In the 1000, or the 1,000 block of Broadway.
Okay.
And then my last request would be, as we were making the final plans for Friday night's parade, we're having everyone line up in the 1000 and 1,100 blocks of Broadway, and we think it would be safest to have those blocks blocked off from 5 until 6, because there'll be about 21 trailers there. So I chatted with Chief Ackerman about that, and I also went and talked to Janice Lynn at the library to make sure she would be okay with us blocking that off, and both thought it was a wise idea.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to barricade from 12th to 10th, 4:00, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. that night. Move to approve barricading Broadway from 10th to 12th, would you say?
10th.
10th to 12th from 5:30, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m.
5:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. And how many people will be riding, so we know where to look for? Alright. Go.
Someone's gotta drive.
You're not gonna ride?
I'm driving a different car.
You're driving, okay. Darling, did you say yes? We need you. We need a mail present.
That's great, thank you very much, we'll see you Friday night.
Okay, thank you for, I heard that they had, it was in the Topeka paper?
Oh, yesterday's article, yes, and the Topeka Capital was awesome.
A full page?
Yeah.
So that's awesome, so thanks for.
Getting us the word out there.
Nice article on KCOY this morning about it too.
Good, 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 good.
And this ad?
Yes, is the ad that is going in the State Parks Guide.
Oh, okay.
Vicki had asked us to share that, so she'll, that was.
Very nice.
Good, right.
Alright, thank you Wayne.
Thank you council.
Alright, anyone else? Okay, moving along to business items, Ron Trogel?
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for the time, just came for this evening to talk you a little about the Sporting Rec, on what's going on, and also in your packet you have some bids on some network on the Black Diamond up at Lakeview. Once the bids were submitted, I had a couple councilmen contact me and ask some questions about, some different things about the bids, and about the depth of it and so on and so forth, so I talked to both contractors today, and one bid was by an 8x8 foot wall, one was by an 8x4. Two different opinions on this, one thought you had to go down a lot farther, one to think we had to go down so far. I talked to Austin today, he said contact Tony up at CES, and he thought if you, you know, I think the freeze line's three foot, he said if you went down, you know, two and a half, three foot, you'd be okay. I talked to, when I talked to Big Blue Concrete, he'd like to go down even, you know, maybe get below that. Now, you know, it's your decision, is it wasted cement, or is it not? I talked to Inline, they said they'd probably pour a footing, and then go another foot in the ground, and so the wall be three foot high. You want, you want, you want to stay above ground, try to stay below, three foot or below, otherwise you gotta add some type of safety barrier, like a railing or something on top of that. So, that's, that's kinda what the two difference between the two bids were, one was an 8x8 and one was a 4x4. So, I measured the existing wall that, that they put in there, five, I don't know, five years ago, it's, it's right at three foot, on, on the north end, so. And if some of you aren't familiar on where this, this was, what's all gonna take place, this is the best photo of it. On the Black Diamond, right here's the existing redwood ties, this little area here, then those would get ripped out. You'd get a retaining wall, and we're gonna bring it farther into, into the, into the hill, hopefully slow down some water. We're also gonna cement all this, pass the dugout, put a drain there, to catch the water that comes down, and that drain will connect into the existing drain that you put in in '09, that came down that hill, and then came across. Tony thought that was 15 inch tube there, he thought that, that the water that this would catch, wouldn't have any problem going into that tube with the existing water that's already coming down. I talked to him about that again today, and I talked to him about last year as well. So I think it's something that would really help with the drainage on that field, because right now that, the existing cement's actually slipping towards the field, so any water that gets on there is going. They would angle it down to the drain to catch that water, and take it on out to the, take it on out to the wind. And plus this, right now the walkway, the dugout's just chaprock, it's just dirt, has redwood ties, and, and I think, see the redwood ties up there, they actually lean in so bad and yank most of them out, except the ones riding against the steps so the dirt don't erode and wash out underneath the cement seating area as well. So that's, that's kinda what they were talking about on their bids, of where, where, where that would take place.
So based, just to make sure I understand, so the Inline one is sufficient, as well as the Big Blue?
Yeah, one was just gonna go deeper with their, with their, with their wall and their footing, and one wasn't.
And Tony said either way was fine?
Yeah, he thought either way would, would work, you know, I, my big, you know, yeah, so it's, you know, it's kind of to you guys, what you guys decide on that.
Kevin, you've gone and looked at this, how do you feel?
Yeah, me and Kevin's kinda been working this for a while.
We've been working on this, matter of fact, most of the summer, and the Inline, I'm like Brian, the Inline bid is sufficient enough for what we need up there at the current time, so.
Well, I didn't, when these came in, Carl brought to my attention about the two, so I kinda did some, you know, like I said, don't worry about it, but I just, they asked to double check to see what each one was, and so on and so forth, and so, that's why I did have some other member, councilmembers come to talk to me about it.
It was just kinda odd that they, they both said 120 linear feet.
But you read the length of the wall.
Oh, just the length of the wall.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and it'll be two walls.
Okay.
Just kinda, it's kinda like.
So it's just the height?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's gonna be two walls, correct. Yeah, it won't be 120 single.
Brian, did Big Blue not want to bid 8x, the 8x4 foot?
He, he, he went down, he measured himself, because I kinda showed him what I wanted done, and this one that brought to my attention till I think Friday afternoon, they called, and then I did some research, and, you know, I guess we could go have him do it, I just, if you wanna take half that price off of that, I don't, I don't know, I couldn't, can't answer that question.
I know Brian called me this morning fairly early, and was trying to run them both down to, you know, check it out, to see who was, you know.
I did talk to both of them today as well.
And talked to Tony, so I mean.
Did you, did you tell them they weren't bidding apples to apples?
Well, we thought they were.
Well, but they weren't.
Yeah, one bid an eight inch, one bid a four inch.
Well, uh, feet.
Foot. Or foot, I'm sorry.
So if, if, if Big Blue Concrete decides that a four foot would work, do they agree that that would? No, because they don't know about that. They don't know that their opponent was bidding a four foot and they were bidding an eight, right?
Right, right, that's correct.
So we don't really have a competitive bid here. Now, we've not disclosed what either bid is, so do you think it's still a fair? Yeah, it's in the packet, there's no document.
Yeah, you can go online and look at it.
Well, then we've lost our objective here then. Well, I guess if you take Darling's approach, if you divide it by, in half, right? You'd reduce it by 3780 to bring it down to 18305 versus 17250.
So it still doesn't.
So this still?
No, it's 10,800, isn't it?
Well, the first.
For the wall.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Also, that'd be different.
5,400.
Well, still, it's kinda, it still will make for a fair bid.
Right, there's some vets digging and.
Well, if they were given the, the explanation, well, you told them specifically that the other person only recommended a five foot wall?
No, no. Because actually, we, I actually got Big Blue's first, so, so that's.
Big Blue's gonna use a pumper truck to pump the concrete down, Inline's gonna use the bucket to pump up, so that's $1,900 that would come and be part of the difference.
And that's a choice the contractors make.
Plus Big Blue is charging us to haul the old concrete out, where Inline is.
Do you think they just missed that with Inline, because it has to be done? Or they're just throwing that in for nothing?
They, they know it's coming out, because when I talked to them, that slaps, and the measurement wise, when you look at their measurements at 90 by, 16 by 90, it's, it's the same for, for both.
If we go with Inline, does the city have to haul out the old concrete then, or will they go do it?
That's, that's in with it.
There's not a fair way to do this. First bidder, Inline, you know, their, their bid has been exposed, if you go back and let the other guy bid the same scope, he already knows what his competition is. How are you gonna handle it? Well, they, I think Brian said that they believed a different approach, right?
Yes.
So Big Blue is saying they wanna put in the eight feet wall, right? But they've not been asked if they'd put a four foot in to make it an even bid. What's fair?
Well, if you maybe take a different look at it, you ask an engineer to design something, and you ask two different engineers, they're gonna design, you go, I want this piece of equipment, or this layout like this, and each one of them's gonna come up with a certain way to do it.
Alright, that's why you have to tell them to bid to the same scope, but.
But you tell one engineer to put a wall in, you go, well, I need this amount of wall, one of them's gonna go, well, I recommend you go below the frost line, the other one's gonna go, I recommend you don't.
Right.
Or you don't need that.
So then it's either up to the engineer, it's up to us to say what scope you're gonna use, so that they both bid to the same scope, unless this guy says, I don't believe that four foot will do it, therefore I don't wanna bid, because I'm saying to do the work properly, it takes the eight, and did you ask him? No, you didn't, because you didn't know there was a, that they weren't both bidding to the same scope.
Right, yeah, I found out, I got this brought to my attention on Friday.
So what do you say to this guy? Well, I think you just take the two bids we have, that's what we have. I mean. Is there a motion to accept either of these bids?
I'll make a motion that we accept Inline's bid for $17,250. Second.
To be taken out of the Recreation General Fund?
Sale tax, general fund.
No, the Recreation account is in the general fund, correct?
The. Yeah, it takes some of the special parks, some rest to finish it up.
The remaining, I would say, because 16,600 is not what's in capital outweigh of the recreational services.
We spent a year to date at 75,000. On the items listed here for the other capital outlay projects for 2016, have, have you?
The only one we did was, we worked on painting something in the restrooms, and then we had that big washout, remember this past year? We said, hey, let's wait to see what, what can happen to fix some of these problems, instead of putting money into something else, let's see if we can fix one problem, and so that's, that's why we didn't, didn't do anything, and that's why this is being brought up to help, to start fixing some of these problems.
Okay, because the other things listed are portable pitcher's mound.
Yep, batting cage.
And batting cage, you don't plan to do that this year?
Well, no, and obviously this, there's, there's no way.
Okay. Well, we spent a year to date at 75.
Well, that's just on, but she was just talking about the capital outweigh.
Capital outweigh.
I know. So who made the motion, Bill, where do you want the money to come from?
Can we take it out of the general fund?
To recrea, do it out of, out of the Recreation Fund and.
Well, I don't think we can get all of it out of the Recreation Fund, okay?
And then maybe the remainder out of the special parks.
Gonna take part of it out of the Recreation Fund, and the rest of it out of Special Funds, is that right?
Special, special parks.
Anything above the 14,890?
Yep.
Is that a special course?
The, the remaining in.
Okay. Who is the second?
Second.
Alright, any further discussion?
Well, it does concern me that we didn't get apples to apples bids, and in the future, if we have something like this before to make public, I would like to see that we do get bids that are apples to apples.
Okay.
Because it's not fair to the bidders.
That's true. But once it's in the packet, we have to go with it, so. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Alright, Brian? I'm not yes or no, I wanna, I want to vote here. Six oh one.
And then I was just going to update you on recreation things that have gone, been going on, and what is coming up. We've actually just got done with most of our, our fall activities, junior soccer for grades three, four, and five, regular soccer for first grade through high school, and youth volleyball for grades four, five, and six. And we got one more week left of flag football. Junior soccer had 36 little participants, soccer had 173 kids, kindergarten through seventh grade. Our high school program is growing more and more in soccer, we're actually running out of green space, they're playing on such a small field that a goalie can kick it into the other goal. I mean, it's, it's, and my biggest complaint is, hey, we need, we need a bigger field, I don't have a space for a bigger field. This is what we got, this is what we're gonna deal with, so, you know, Brian, before green space is something, I'm, I'm still looking at possibility of doing something, because when you get, you know, 16, 17, 18, 19 year old, or 18 year old kids on there, they, they can kick the ball pretty good. We see volleyball and flag football, you know, we got teams from Axel, Frankfurt, like volleyball Free Kingson Valley Heights, Washington, Hanover, and, and, you know, so we're getting a lot of surrounding communities to come in, in Marysville and join our rec program as well. The school has been very cooperative with us through our volleyball, and we're gonna be starting a youth basketball league before Christmas. They've, they've really, you know, helped us out getting time and space. With, with a gym, with minus a gym, it's gonna be a little, a little tougher to, for gym space, but we're, we're trying to make it work, I'm talking to the school quite a bit about getting time slots for practicing and things. So our basketball league is something new that we're trying this year, and we're, we're excited about that, and then obviously, you know, we've had our farmer's market and many other things, but, fall, fall activity's been going really well, and registration has been, been really strong as well, so, a lot of the outer communities are, are wanting to come to Marysville to do their, the recreation, because they have, they have no place else to go.
How many people did you have at flag football?
100, um, flag football, we had 164.
Wow.
That's why volleyball, this is our third year we're doing it, first year we had 38, last year we had 54, this year we're up to 78. So it's, it, it just, it just keeps growing, and, you know, we keep it recreational, we try to keep it as recreational as possible, because that's what, that's what we're about, giving every kid a chance to play as much as they can possibly play, and, and hopefully they, they learn some sportsmanship and, sportsmanship and have fun. Another thing, the American Legion is planning on bidding on the 2017 state senior legion tournament this year, they told me that, I, I just talked to Greg again today to make sure that is correct, and they do plan on placing a bid, because at the state tournament, they had a gentleman come up to them and just say, isn't it about time Marysville hosts a state tournament, so it's probably a good sign, you know, not saying that we won't get outbid, or somebody else might come up with something, but I think that they will be bidding on the senior state, and he said, if that don't fall through, he might go for a junior legion state tournament as well, so, but he's gonna try to get the bid for the senior legion state tournament this year, so, that'd be eight teams from across the state, including obviously Marysville.
That'd be great, you probably need to focus on the concession stand a little bit, restroom's up there, so, press box, that's an ongoing thing we need to look at.
Uh, is there, and I'm just gonna ask, is there anything else, any complaints, any comments, you as a council have heard, or anything that, that we're unaware of on, on the recreation side of it?
I don't know, I see all those families out there, when I go by Lakeview on a Saturday, and those fields are packed, and then I'm gonna, on Sunday to the Feld Field, and it was packed with families too, so we are very blessed that you're organizing all these activities for our youth, as well as surrounding people to bring them to our town.
Yeah, I see.
And I know we talked about that, about travel and tourism, Wayne's already gone, about how important that competitive sports are to travel and tourism dollars, albeit sales tax dollars, whatever it is, so, thank you.
Thank you, we enjoy doing it, so.
Yeah, great job.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Alright, uses permitted upon review, car wash and site plan, Dave, do you wanna share a little bit?
Okay, y'all should have a staff report there. Planning Commission, got together, we met, we had a public hearing for a use permitted upon review to approve a car wash at the 410 Center Street. I think we ought to just do this, we brought the recommendation to you to approve that use permitted for a car wash at that area.
I know, I talked to Dave this afternoon with Austin, and.
Just want to do that separate, just do the, I wanna do the public hearing for the use permitted, and then we can discuss the site plan then.
Okay. Whether we accept the use permitted upon review?
Right.
As recommended by the planning commission? Okay. Does it have anybody going to accept?
We've accepted use permitted for, for the car wash site plan.
I second. Wait, you're gonna approve the use permitted upon review for the car wash?
For the, sorry, the car wash, yeah.
No, not just the car.
Okay.
Just the car wash. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh.
Okay, now we're down to the site plan. I have different views than Carla has on the opinions in the book and how it should be. Planning Commission approved the site plan with a two-foot variance on the west property line. And Carla's not, doesn't believe that we should be doing a two-foot variance. It should go to zoning board of appeals.
In the Unified Land Development Code, well, I should say, the hearing that they had approved uses permitted upon review, they had a public hearing. There wasn't contested, and they approved that. That on the site plan, the setback is supposed to be, it's a commercial property, but it's supposed to be ten feet if it's adjacent to residential property, which this is. And this, this site plan is only two feet from the residential property line. And according to the Unified Land Development Code, the way I read it is that variance has to go to the zoning board of appeals. That the planning commission does not make that call. Any variance has to go to the zoning board of appeals. Then they will have a hearing, and assuming they approved it, then it would come back to us then. So, I would move that we would send the site plan to the zoning board of appeals.
Zoning.
I'm sorry. Send it back to David, who will meet with the zoning board of appeals.
But zoning board of appeals, if they go through that, does not, that does not come back...
Excuse me?
We do have a zoning board of appeals, and that gets approved. That doesn't come back to the governing body.
It will not come back to the governing body after they visit? I don't... I would think it would because you were presenting to the site plan today.
I just presented the site plan with this so you knew what was going on with it. Those site plans you don't approve, the only ones you approve is when you have dedications and easements on there.
Do you believe that to be correct?
That sounds valid. But then we've never had a site plan at the zoning board of appeals before either, so...
It says, notification of commissioners, the board shall notify the governing body and the planning commission of any official action or decision.
So, they're notifying the governing body.
So, you would report back to us and let us know what they decide? Is that agreed?
That's good.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to send this back to Dave Richardson through the zoning board of appeals?
Want to do anything with the fee?
Excuse me?
Want to do anything with the fee?
Let's do this first, make sure it's going there. So, I would entertain a motion?
Move to send the site plan back to the zoning board of, or Dave Richardson so he can go to zoning board of appeals for proper...
For the variance, setback variances?
Proper variances.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who said aye?
I did. The house next door. What's it used for?
Someone said office today, didn't they? So, are you, you're opposed to it just in general, being that close?
Well, no, I, I'm, the two foot, it will probably be approved anyway. The house next door, if it's used as an office, which the, and then the, if you've got two office buildings, how close can they be?
Then it's not, it's not a residential area, then it would be a non-factor.
If it's C1, it has to be, I think it has to be C1 for the property line to property line, correct? C2 has a setback, but C1 doesn't?
C2 doesn't either.
C2 doesn't have a setback, except when it's adjacent to residential.
Okay, that's the difference.
Now, if you're saying it is an office, then it's not residential, so, this doesn't...
We don't really know that.
Well, you shouldn't say that, then.
Okay, it's a residential area, house. That's what it's zoned as, or that's what it's, it looks like it appears, appears to be used as. Okay, so, we're going to send that back to the zoning, to, for Dave to take to zoning board of appeals. The second part of it is that there is a fee for a hearing. This property owner has paid the hearing for the uses permitted upon review. Do we want to waive the second hearing fee?
Yes, yeah.
So, I would entertain a motion?
Move to waive the fee for second hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right, thank you, David.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is the swimming pool manual. I read through this, and I have a list of just typo corrections for the document. It's a very thorough document. I, this was based on the, we had a meeting in August, and based upon our recommendations. So, does anyone have any other corrections to this document? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve policy A-77 as amended and rescinding A-67 and A-69.
Move to approve policy A-69, rescinding A-69.
A-77, it's going to be called A-77.
A-77? Move to approve policy A-77 and rescind A-67 and A-69?
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, thank you very much. We do not have any notices and hearings, so the next item is a consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Next item is a presentation of appropriations ordinance 3637?
Move to approve appropriations ordinance 3637?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, no comment, I was zooming along. Oh, wait a second, Vicki?
I have a, do I need to pull this for discussion, or do I just need to tell you what my concern is?
Well, tell us what your concern is.
Okay, rural property zoning program. Austin, fifty percent cost share annual payment on student loans. Should I hold that for, until we come to departments of administration? Or should I discuss this now?
Wait, let's discuss it now because we did discuss and approve this last meeting.
Last meeting.
The application, you remember?
Okay. Well, I guess I just wasn't thinking because I talked to Austin about this this afternoon, about when we approved his contract, what his contract said. And this is an additional a thousand five hundred dollars from the city and an additional a thousand five hundred dollars from the state. I think that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good bonus above and beyond. And I was talking to him today about perhaps, if we approve this, to perhaps back off something else that's costing the city, such as a seminar, that he not go to a seminar to reduce the cost, to even out with this a thousand five hundred dollars?
Well, I think this, it actually applies to 2017, it's not going to be distributed to 20... I mean, we had to pay it, but it's, you get paid out in 2017, is that right?
It starts this year, actually.
Yeah.
They put me through this year.
So...
And what do you mean paid out?
I thought that...
A thousand five hundred dollars a year for five years?
They pushed, they, since it was the way it was.
Thank you.
I submitted all the proper paperwork on behalf of me and Debbie, I filled it out for Debbie, but they said it qualified for this year, I wasn't anticipating this year.
But the application, when I read it, said that you had to be an employee of a Ross County for the entire year, and you haven't been.
I didn't, I didn't push their hands on it, I just submitted the application.
Well, that's weird. Because the application specifically said that you had to be a Ross employee for the entire, you had to be in a Ross County for the entire year.
Was Gary County a Ross County?
No, I was not in Ross County. But like I said, I didn't, I didn't make the rules, or I don't make the rules. I just filled out the paperwork.
Well, and, I mean, I wanted to be in the program, I think it's an excellent program. And I pushed for the Ross program for Marshall County when the county was considering it. I think it's a good program, but since we had not considered that, I mean, that's, well, it's three thousand dollars a year. A thousand five hundred of which is paid by the city. I thought the county was going to participate in the Ross program and take candidates, you know, as they applied, but I guess they're not doing that. They had to, they had to approve being a Ross county before anybody could participate and take advantage of the system, excuse me, of that program. And we are a Ross county, but it falls to the city to decide if they're going to pay half of that for the state to match half.
Right.
So, my concern, or my thought is, this is another three thousand dollar benefit of which a thousand five hundred dollars will be paid annually by the tax, with taxpayer money from the city of Marysville. So, mine was, in order to compensate for the difference, good for him that he got into the program, but my concern is that perhaps we shouldn't take away. And when he and I talked, he said, well, like what? You know, we're not going to take the car away, we're not going to do any of that, but maybe to not go to a seminar, maybe to back out of one seminar a year?
Mayor, um, excuse me, Vicki. We already discussed that, that in lieu of raises for the next two years, that would be...
It's a five-year program, so are we going to reconsider in two years? And what is, what are the annual raises, twenty-five cents an hour?
It was voted to do on the seventeen, 2017, 2018, in lieu of raises. They were taking it out this year already.
I know, well, it kind of caught me off guard.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting it either.
I didn't know that it was going to be applied to 2016, based on what the document read, so... You are correct that we said it was in lieu of 2017 and 2018 raises.
Twenty-eighteen raises.
But we believed it to be in 2017 and 2018. So...
Carl?
Yes?
Excuse me, Mayor. What does that add out to? Is it twenty-five cents an hour raise annually? What does that add out to over a year?
Five hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, well, then there's still a thousand dollars out there.
Well, do you have a recommendation?
I just did make a recommendation, I thought that maybe if he, because when he and I talked, I said, it's not just the cost of going to a seminar, it's the time away from the office, non-productive time, you know, that we're still paying a salary for. It is, you know, mileage, well, we pay for the car, we pay for gas anyway. It's meals, it's hotel, and I think when you add that up, that'll get pretty close to a thousand.
I think we agreed to pay for ICMA, that was part of our agreement. And we also agreed for league conferences, correct?
Right.
That was part of the agreement.
So, he chose three for this year, and I think if, I think, I think that for him to back out of one, I just think that'd be fair to taxpayers. My opinion. You got an opinion on that, Keith?
What's that?
You got an opinion on that?
No, I'm going with what we voted on before.
You are, you okay with that? Five hundred dollars as opposed to fifteen hundred dollars we'll be paying from the city?
Well, I, that comparison, we've already agreed to. My only surprise cutoff guide was that they gave you in 2016. I thought they were taking that out now to give it to you in 2017. I didn't understand that we were giving it in 2016 as well. So, I was caught off guard about that.
Well, and I didn't do the math, and if it turns out to be five hundred dollars a year increase for an annual raise, that's still, we're still paying a thousand dollars, and over that would be five thousand dollars more over, over the years, over a five-year contract. That he could take advantage of this program.
Well, maybe we just need to make it so that you find savings of at least a thousand dollars a year for the next three years, Austin. Is that a deal? You put that on your plan? You find savings of a thousand a year for our city?
I definitely can do that.
Okay, is that a deal, Vic? I think he can do that. He's, he's working in the LED stuff and...
The hard number, I mean, at least seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars is what you're taking out of the, for twenty-five cents, that equals about seven twenty-nine.
What about twenty-eighty hours?
Yes, but benefits are the thirty-five percent on top of that, that's an approximation number.
Okay, but he did just save money on the phone bill?
Yes, twenty dollars a month.
It's a job, man.
Okay, so, he's going to keep track, and he's going to report to you, right? Of savings of a thousand a year, is that a deal?
That's a deal.
Okay, so we will proceed on with the appropriations ordinance? As presented, roll call? Spikeman?
Yes.
Basinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Frye?
Yeah.
Gross?
No.
Schroller?
No.
Thrawn?
Yes.
Five-two? Five-two? Okay, Austin, you're up?
All right, I had put this in one of my highlights about the bridge flags, the American flags on the bridges. Jim Breeding had come and talked to me about paying for the flags, not only this year, but for the next five years, and wanted us to sign a contract for them. At that point in time, I said, yeah, I can do this year, but I can't, I can't comment on a five-year contract because, I mean, I, I believe that the flags are a good thing out there. And after doing a little bit of research, found some, which I neglected to put in here, some evidence that this was, let's say, a personal project put together for beautification, for a good purpose. But it's my feeling that it might be setting a, I mean, I'm sure there's precedents out there, but it might be setting a precedent for people to go, well, everybody thought this was beautiful, well, the thing that I made, so the city can now take over and take care of it from here on out. That being said, I'll let this be a decision on your guys' end. We can, I put some options down there, agree to a five-year contract, provide partial funding for whatever you want to provide, provide no funding moving forward. But, I mean, I wouldn't mind paying for this year.
Yeah, I see it as kind of like you do, as two separate issues, as paying for this year and then the future. In light of that, I would move that we agree to pay five hundred and twelve dollars for sixteen flags at thirty-two dollars apiece for special parks for the next year. For out of special parks for the next year.
I second it. So, is that going to be bought in 2016?
Correct, for the, for the 2017 year.
All right, any discussion?
Discussion? You're saying only do half of them?
No, that's, sixteen is for a full year.
Sixteen flags, yep.
Okay.
So, it's because it's eight per bridge.
Haven't we decided that those flags don't last a year?
That I've been told they last a, that's, that's what I've been told they last a year. That's what his request was.
Okay, and I, I talked to Jim Breeding, and he said that the service flags, that somebody would be taking care of that, he would, or somebody in there is going to be taking care of that, they're not asking for that, just the American flags?
Yes.
Yeah, so how are we going to do half, what you said?
That's, that's, we'll pay for the 2017 year, full sixteen... That's, that's, we'll pay for the 2017 year, full sixteen flags, is my motion.
Okay. So, we're committed to one year?
Correct.
One year only?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-oh. And I guess you just want, um, him to communicate what to Mr. Breeding regarding, just to take it one year at a time, or...
Moving forward, what, what would you like the message?
I don't think we should sign a contract.
Yeah.
Um, we should either.
No.
Well, I, I, did you pull the minutes to see us, when we discussed this? I think when they first discussed it, that they said it was their project.
And we, we agreed to allow it because we thought it'd be nice.
Yeah, right.
And it is nice.
And we do, I do love the flags out there on the highway, but, um, kind of like all our other projects, like Lee Dam Art Center and the Kestner House Museum, somehow it evolves into ours, they give it to us and then it's ours. I understand it's just five hundred dollars a year versus thousands and other gifts, but...
It still adds up in the year and time.
It still adds up, yeah.
And those flags don't get any cheaper.
So, anyway, it's just kind of tough when they change the mind and thinking, maybe? Okay, are we just going to move on then? Do one year?
One year. Uh, Tension Storm Shelter. I was contacted by Daryl at Tension Envelope about them getting a grant to build a tornado shelter or a storm shelter out by Tension. Uh, and they were looking to get, Daryl apparently has, uh, a friend or a family member that works for FEMA, and they, they instructed him on how to get a grant and to, to get a gra- uh, a city-sponsored grant. Uh, and the request was, uh, in order to get a city-sponsored grant, we have to say we support, uh, businesses and having storm shelters in town. And that, that's pretty much what this number, item number two is. Updating the, uh, EOP, the Emergency Operating Plan, um, there's one more word in it, uh, Emergency Operations and Community Plan, to say, and it's...
On page seven, the highlighted section is what you added?
Yes. The...
Page ninety-six.
Oh, page ninety-six. Page ninety-six, uh, Safe Rooms and Tornado Shelters Within the City. The city of Marysville believes in and supports public and private property owners to make use of tornado shelters and safe rooms. These owners should take this into consideration when construction, constructing new buildings. And from my understanding, this will get, uh, help him, uh, get a grant to, uh, to build a storm shelter. And then it was also brought to my attention that along with that update, that we should also include, uh, around Kestner House Museum, uh, Kestner Block, so, because we, we own it, uh, on page nine, or page ninety-eight. So, those are the updates I'm providing, uh, for your approval.
I move that we accept the safe rooms and tornado shelters within the city and also in the, uh, major city assets, the entire Kestner Block, into the emergency operations and continue, continuity plan.
Is there a second?
Safety.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
When we get, when we set these safe rooms up, are these, even though it's at Tension, is the neighborhood around it, if they don't have a basement or a place to go, can they go use that, or is that strictly for people at Tension?
That is, that's up to Tension, um, on how they set it up.
Because it's on their property.
It's on their property.
All right, thank you. All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-oh. Um, do we communicate all this, these emergency measures to our, our staff?
Yes.
You have a safety meeting every so often?
Yep.
Okay. It was good to read.
And the last item is really a disc- I mean, I included for a discussion item, and if you guys want to continue discussion, these are some of the things that me and David were talking about in regards to containers. Um, one of the main ones is how the, a shipping container versus a semi-trailer with wheels on it. Um, pretty much going to be the same thing, somebody can park a trailer in, in, in a neighborhood and use it as a storage container. So, uh, that's something to think about. Uh, construction site use. The schools are going to be using them for, I mean, they're using them right now, and...
But those are just temporary.
Those are temporary. So, so think about the temporary...
When the project's over, they'll be gone.
Exactly. Exactly. So, where, uh, so if you were to say, um, ban them from all residential areas, well, that, the schools are all in residential areas.
Well, you can't really say that, because what if a contractor comes in to build a house, and he sets one down to temporary use while he builds a house?
Exactly.
And people use those pods for moving.
Exactly. So, so just some, some conversation topics. Um, uh, commercial projects, that's another, along with, uh, construction sites. Zoning, zoning regulations, some things that, uh, we discussed, we're allowing in C3 in industry. C3 is highway business, uh, Walmart, uh, Valley Bet, all, all along the highway out here, uh, not typically in residential areas. Um, uh, use upon review in C2, and which is, you know where that's at. Um, and so, if somebody wanted to use them in C2, they'd have to come through the board, and it'd, it'd probably have to be a really good use, and depending on how you want to word that, word that. And, um, not to allow in C1, which is, uh, Broadway, pretty much, like I said. Discussion items. So, is there thoughts?
Is our attorney still reviewing the, you know, as far as the permits that have already been granted, is he going to look at that?
I think where we're at, and what stage we're at, we were sending this down for the next, uh...
Oh, that's right.
Planning and zoning.
Planning, zoning.
Yeah. And they, they said they'd take any ideas you guys had into consideration, and then I also included, it should be in here.
Ten minutes.
The...
Ordinances.
The ordinances, the extra ordinances that Debbie got from her clerk friends, um, let's see, Oswego?
Neodeshay.
And, what'd you say, Neodeshay?
Neodeshay.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe we should give them a little direction, or we don't have to, but, um, I think when you read through some of these, I mean, we're not going to tell the school they can't use them, I mean, and, um, it makes some, it's cleaner on a construction site than having it all over the yard, so from a temporary standpoint, I think we kind of need to allow them.
We probably have a, need a, would need a definition of temporary, because somebody could spend years building something.
Yeah, and Dave said that they get, he gets, um, a building permit or construction permit, and he knows approximately how long it's going to take, so he could be tracked that way, you know, given a permit for so ma- so long.
And there's always the opportunity for, for permits, uh, I know, uh, items that I presented before, uh, with Goddard, they have a, uh, thirty-day permit that you can, that they have, and you can't use it more than twice in a year, and that, that might be more applicable to a residential area, um, whereas, I don't, I haven't seen a specific one where it states construction, oh, there it is, construction sites.
What page, Austin?
That one is one oh-three.
Yeah, it says, "Removed upon completion of the project," so it'd be have to be tied to the second construction project?
Yeah, it'd be constructed.
And have to be dated or something, maybe something on that.
So, as long as construction is going on, uh, they can have it out there for their uses, just like Casey's used theirs for their main offices. They put those construction containers out there, and they had an air-conditioned office in one of them.
Those are called construction.
Yeah.
That's what they're called, that's what they're for, and that pretty much makes it understood, it's temporary.
Yeah.
And it does make for a cleaner job site.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and when they have everything strewn out, I understand that, but anybody who finds them, uh, unsightly, you understand from the beginning that those are only temporary. I don't object to that.
Right.
I don't object to that. It's when it's set down ten feet from your property line, and it's there forever.
Right.
And, uh, they're called, they look like boxcars. The reason that we're having this now is because a manufacturing company here locally has used theirs, they have no more use for them evidently, and are willing to sell them. That's what brought this up in the first place. But all of these that are in town, I don't know if you all have taken a look, but there's none anywhere else but in Ward Three. I went to the zoning...
One and one, one and...
Two.
Two. Well, there are several in two.
Permanent? Are they set up to be permanent?
Hopefully not.
Well, these are set up to be permanent, and, uh, the person that was most vocal about having the containers had made a comment that, uh, he wouldn't think that it should, they should be allowed up like in the parks, and my comment to that was, Ward, in Ward Three, the houses are smaller, but they, the people living in Ward Three, which is my ward, pay as much or a higher percentage of their income for their homes, which are, is their largest purchase, which is their, their biggest asset. It is just as important to them to have the same consideration for the quality of their neighborhood as any other neighborhood in town. I, I, uh, Darlene was at that meeting, and she felt the same way. In fact, she spoke up and made a comment. But I feel that, uh, I think if you are sitting in a house, and somebody on this side of your house, ten feet off your property line, is putting one of these containers, and somebody over here on this side is putting up ten, and you can't say, "Well, you put yours there first, so Mister over here, you can't have it." I mean, that didn't, doesn't seem a fair rule, a thumb, either. But I think that if you have them set on either side, it definitely has depreciated your property value. And I just, uh, they're, they're called containers, they're not called, and they're temporary. They're supposed to be temporary. I just, uh, I just object to the fact that all of these are in my ward. One's orange, one's yellow. This one, boy, they painted it white and they tried to make it look all right, but it's still a big box sitting out in the yard, and, and the problem with Ward Three is it's mixed use as far as zoning, and there's houses, and I keep asking Dave the same thing over. It's, it's, housing is, what's it called, David? In C2, where C2 is...
Non.
Commercial, non-conforming use. So, houses are in the commercial areas, that's what's happened over time, when Palmetto became part of Marysville, and the zoning, which is along the edge of the old Palmetto, uh, was zoned for, for commercial or industrial use, and now houses are in there. And I just, um, I, I, I just don't feel that, that the people in this ward should be treated any differently than anybody else, and anybody who votes for these containers should stop and think, "What'll happen if it's set down beside your house?" And just because you may have a bigger house, I don't think that the council should be put into a position of deciding, "Yes, you can have this, and no, you can't have that," because you're in a different ward, and the people around you wouldn't like it, you know? Uh, I, I, I don't believe that, uh, that permanent use is the appropriate thing to do with these containers, my opinion, as these sit in my ward.
The one in your ward, is that on a C2, commercial property?
Um...
Or industrial?
It, it would be a s- I think it's a C2.
A C2.
But some of those are in R2, in, in Ward Three are in R2.
Yeah, Jason Barnes was on a C2, right?
Yeah, his is in C2.
Yes. But it's also residential, non-conforming use. And as a very wise person that I respect said, "Just because our codes don't say it's, it's, uh, not allowed, doesn't mean that it should be allowed." If it's something that has not been addressed, it should come to the council before, you know, it's not okay to put them down because it doesn't say in our code it can't be done. That should come to the council.
Well, what about if he uses it as a shop? I mean, is that available? He uses it as a shop, since he is a plumber?
Nope. He is a plumber, yes. And he's made this...
I mean, his, his painted white container looks better than some of the shits.
Absolutely. That is no lie. That's the truth. But I, I can't even think of a use if I came and set down next to your property, just because it, it worked for me on whatever I was doing if I was your neighbor.
I look at it like we've got two issues at hand. One is moving forward, and one is the fact that we've already got some existing slash permits granted, and you can't unring the bell.
Well, was that bell you were unringing when you said that, uh, they could time out? They cannot be, you said...
There are, I, I've, in some of the research, I don't know if it was on yours.
There, there are some places where you can, well, not some places, you, you can, you, yes.
Right.
Some places have said, when enacting a certain rule such as this, they give them a year to move them out.
Right.
So, that...
It can give longer. I, uh, found one where I think it was ten years or something like that, or, or if the property changed hands, they'd move the clock.
Right.
And Austin, as you have done research, don't you find that most cities, you have asked, I don't know if you did a listserv on it to see what other cities have done? Have you, I mean, most of them are saying, "No, they just don't allow it all." Most cities have addressed this and, and said, "No." Is that true?
The, the ones, let's say I've gotten total six, seven responses, and most, most of them are against it. It's, uh...
Against it.
But they don't have, like Oswego has a pretty nice, like, lined-out description. Um, Goddard was one that said, uh, the temporary use in residential areas. Uh, but yeah, there, there is somewhat of a theme, uh, right now, that, yeah, they are either temporary or Holden, I think it was, or Horton, one of those two. Uh, Holden, yeah, said, "No in residential areas," and that was all the answer was.
Well, you know, on the ones that already exist, to me, it would be unethical for us to pull that back once we've already granted it. I think if we maybe put, found some common ground and, and, you know, and they understood that that was the option, it's binary, we said, "But we'd like you to clean them up and make some kind of compromise solution," that would be good, but I don't think we should go and say, "Yeah, you've had this here, you've had it painted up," or, "We've already granted just permit, and now we're going to yank it back." I know some cities do that, but to me, it's...
I think the hardest one is that one that's been, that's twenty-foot, that's been there for five or six years.
Been painted up white.
I mean...
And, and the other side of it, some of these guys got them down on property that they own, but they don't live next to it. That's the other part of it.
Yes.
You know, they, they don't have to look at it every day.
They don't put it next to their house.
Well, I, you know, I gotta run down to my other property and see how things are, well, that's fine, but you don't have to look at it every day, because it's not right beside your house.
Right.
Well, how do they get a building permit if there's no house on it?
They have the adjacent house.
Oh, the adjacent, okay, I was going to say.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
In both those situations.
Huh.
Both those situations, they own the adjacent house.
Right. If you have any other, I mean, you want to submit any more information you want to talk about, or, uh, give to the planning and zoning, uh, board, submit them to me, and they can, so they can have all the information, your guidance, uh, for the city to go forward.
You guys, at least there at least an agreement that from a temporary standpoint, from a construction train, standpoint, that we're okay with them?
Yeah.
As long as we monitor how long they're going to be there?
Yes, and there needs to be an end to it.
Yeah, I can see for construction, you know, that there's an end date?
Me too.
Yeah, I can see for construction, you know, that there's an end date that's, you know-
And that's residential, that's across the board.
You know, somebody moves, you know, they bring those bogs, and you know-
Because some people will do a remodel and they'll wanna put it there while they remodel their cars and stuff.
Right.
I think we need to-
But there's also end date on it when they remodels, right?
Right. So I think you can communicate that, that temporary construction, whether they're okay.
Construction here, yeah.
Anything else you guys wanna, as a consensus, communicate?
Just that, I mean, Austin, oops, Austin has done this search, and I don't think Debbie has too, maybe, part of that too. They spent their time doing it, and I think it really hadn't gotten out to the public, what the other towns were doing. I went to the zoning meeting and they said, "What's everybody else doing?"
Well, that was the first time they heard about it though, in all honesty, yeah.
Right, right, but-
So you could bring these responses to it?
Yeah, and then they requested us do that, and that's why we're actually doing this, is to get your opinion, and they wanted the responses that we got from other cities, so they can have a background.
Appreciate it. And while we're at that, I really don't think we oughta have eighteen-wheelers on the streets in residential. They're heavy, and if they're loaded, they're sitting there, they're deteriorating our streets. We had talked at one time about not even allowing eighteen-wheeler traffic to go up and down Twelfth Street. We were trying to put together a route that they were gonna go, remember that, Mayor?
Yeah, we were trying to aim for Eighth and Fifteenth.
Yeah, we didn't, but our point was to try and conserve our streets, and to have somebody or a couple of somebodies or five somebodies decide that they're gonna pull them up to their house every night. That's when we decided that that was, that that parking lot back of Hesse's, the big building, the big, that belongs to-
The corner of City's Lot.
Yeah, we took, we had decided or we considered that that could be used. Somebody could come into town with their eighteen-wheeler and park it down there, and then they could go home from there, so that those are not driving down residential streets or blocking sightlines, so that people can get around this corner and that corner. But we were kinda considering that. We really didn't want eighteen-wheelers parked on our streets or on the properties even, because they're driving up and down the streets to get to people's houses in residential areas. I don't think we did anything about it, but we had, we had talked about that. I don't think that eighteen-wheelers oughta be parked on our residential streets, or using our residential streets to pull into their yards.
Now, the other side of this-
Yes?
Nebraska Furniture Mart comes to town.
Okay.
People go to Omaha, Kansas City, they show up and they bring their eighteen-wheeler down because, let's say, Austin bought him a new couch and stuff, and then he goes to Darlene's and delivers stuff. That's how they bring it, is on an eighteen-wheeler.
I don't have a problem with that either, just like our refuse trucks. They have to go up and down those streets, but I'm saying-
You just don't want them parked there.
Parked there overnight, sitting there days at a time. I mean, they're a sideline.
Sure, just in and out.
In and out.
Just like it doesn't need containers.
I don't think our land, Unified Land Development Code addresses some of my trailers either, so.
And there, and there are some that have just been parked there for a long time in the R2 in, in Ward Three.
Well, and like I said, just because it hasn't been addressed doesn't mean that it's something, it should be our decision to make to, to address it, and to make an ordinance, if we don't want it rather than allow it, just because nothing's written that has addressed it yet.
Okay, well, we could ask them to bring something to that as well, right?
Yeah, that's why I brought up semi-trailers in particular.
Put that in the planning permission award. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Debbie?
I just wanted to mention that Blue Valley is having their 60th anniversary on Friday from noon to six, giving away a lot of prizes, be sure and stuff over there in home city. And we went to the annual League of Municipalities Conference, and they have a service awards luncheon, and we do have some employees with service awards this year, which we'll be distributing those at the Christmas party. But I wanted to mention Todd Ackerman, 25 years this year, and Tim Anderson, who is also in the police department, 15 years, Sam Crott, street department assistant supervisor, 15 years, Larry Wenzel with the police department, 10 years, and Larry Logan in the street department, 10 years. So we have a lot of long-term employees.
Long-term employees. Thank you for your service. All right, we'll move on to standing committee reports. On the street, I wanted to discuss a little bit about the brick in front of Cromies, they're putting that sidewalk in and the curb and gutter. And Austin said he found in the minutes where we had agreed to only do the first three feet of brick on the curb and gutter out, and I know there's a lot of standing water beyond that three-feet area, and talked to him briefly about maybe having the street department go out ten feet and try to get the slope right to the new curb and gutter. I don't know how you guys feel about that, to have the street crew extend it from the three feet to ten feet or something in between?
Are they putting concrete below the brick?
Are they putting concrete below the brick?
They stabilized what was there, they didn't put any concrete under three foot.
I think they did that years ago, and it just gets bad again really quickly unless it's done kind of right, it would be concrete.
You need to, yeah. I'm, I am afraid that if we open that up, that we're gonna find something we don't wanna, that it's gonna take up more than we bargained for.
But, I mean, that's kind of the business we're trying to help, is Cromies.
Yeah, we're trying to-
And I know that, when we got that estimate on that street, it was about $600,000 to do the entire street, and I don't foresee us doing that next year. So I was just thinking, since they had three feet tore up, I mean, we could tell them to go to six feet, we don't have to go all the way to 10, but to try, you guys-
I know most of it's about halfway back through the parking stall.
Yeah, right, right where you get out of your corner.
That's where you step, and that seems to be where it water-
That biggest puddle, yeah. So you guys wanna just recommend have them do six feet, try to catch the worst area? Or what do you guys think?
How much, I mean, how much work, how much time is it gonna take of theirs? Is there something else that's not getting done so they can do that, would be my concern?
Um, it's, it's gonna take quite a bit of time. The three feet wasn't that big of a deal because it was, I think, four, four bricks.
I went by there, it looks really nice.
Yeah.
I went by there after work.
And if you are gonna do it, you start right where they stopped. I forget, I don't know if they, if inline started again, but to the left of the door.
They haven't yet.
Okay, so from that spot where they stopped on is where the, pretty much the slope of the street is a little bad.
The puddles are the worst.
The puddles are the worst.
On the right side of the-
So yeah, at this point, yeah, this would be the right, if you recommend to do that. It is gonna take some time. So we would have to probably pull off some other things. I haven't talked with Gary on what exactly the idea would be, but if that's what you want, that's-
I think it needs to be done.
I mean, they have time to do it before weather gets bad?
They need to go out six feet.
Six?
Because it wasn't fixing the curb and dropping that down, it should lower the edge there, so we can hopefully-
And I'll talk to Gary, 'cause he, when I went out there, after I, after Debbie found where it, in the tapes where it said three feet, I went out there, and Gary pointed out, from one spot to here, this is, this is how far he would recommend it, be about ten feet out, if we were to do something.
I would just as soon do it right now, because you, we don't-
And that's the only way we can, that's the only way I would have it, is if we do it right. Ideally, yes, I'd love to replace the street, but like she said, that's not my cards right now, my cards.
It's not in the next two-year plan, and I hate to fix three feet, and then, you know, those, people say, "You got the gutter right, and you didn't fix the street," so. Are you goes, is there a motion to go ahead and proceed ten feet out? Do it right?
I make a motion, I move the street department, remove the brick ten feet out in front of Cromies and replace them.
And pull it ever's necessary to do it right?
Yep.
Is there a second motion?
If we need to put concrete under them, we need to put concrete under them.
I agree.
They need to stay.
They need, they need to be put in to stay, I mean, if the back concrete underneath is bad.
We'll do this again in eight years, though, guys.
Yeah, and the thing is, that that's the part where the business is on that block.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's right there, so we might as well do it right. So you had a first and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, thank you very much. The other thing is, those subdivision regulations are on your desks. Those were the ones that were in place when subdivision C, North Park subdivision C was approved. And I know that city attorney Craig Olson mentioned them last week, so I thought you guys should have it, so you can read through them. Pretty simple read, it kinda is consistent that, again, the infrastructure's supposed to be in before building permits are issued, but it's there for you to read, and we'll hear what, Frank's, he'll be at the next meeting, so.
Do you want, no, that's, you can do that.
That's next, yeah. Is there any other street?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
The geometric improvement project, low spot there at the corner of 20th, and then the transition, did you talk to anybody about that?
We haven't had a walkthrough yet. I did talk to Tony about that low spot, he said he meant, he noticed it, but they didn't do anything to that area, like, it was flat before, and that's how it was.
So when they put this asphalt in, they didn't try to crown it at all to drain to the ditch?
So where-
It's, it's, I don't know how you wanna explain, it's about ten feet out from the apex of the northeast corner of the curb, because when it rained last week that one morning-
Okay, yeah, that's what I, I was-
It was still wet there, hours, hours.
I misunderstood it, 'cause you said northeast corner, and I thought-
It's off the apex.
It goes out into the street.
It goes out into the street.
Okay.
It's probably about four, it's probably about where the old curb was before they lined the corner.
And the problem is, they put in the curb in, I mean, if there's a problem, they should've dropped the curb down lower to get the flow over there.
It's brand new.
When we, when we have a walkthrough, 'cause they, we haven't had a walkthrough yet, we will go over that.
I mean, they had all their, it should've all been engineered to drain, I mean, so somewhere, somebody's off an inch or so to have gotten the proper flow on that.
Next time it rains, after it rains, you can go out there, some spray paint.
I, I misunderstood what you guys said.
Yeah, it's not in the curb line, it's out in the, in the street, in the street.
Okay, so.
In the intersection, in the intersection.
It looks, it really does look about where it used to stand when the curb was out there, when it was always, you know, popping up there.
I think it's supposed to rain Tuesday night when it winds.
What time is that gonna start?
Seven o'clock tomorrow night.
Okay, is there anything else for street?
That was, that was mine, too.
I beat you. I beat you.
Okay, water, wastewater, now you can pick it up.
Oh, let them talk, if they have any.
This is our example of a CIPP. They had it, and we, I asked them if they could bring it to city hall so you guys could see it, so that's what we line all, everything with. So it's pretty sturdy, huh? So we pray it lasts 50 years, right?
Eighty years.
Eighty years.
Hopefully it lasts eighty years.
What is it said, does it have longevity?
Eighty years.
Eighty years? So it's kinda cool to see that final product there.
It's like, it's like, pretty much, it's a new pipe.
It's a what?
New pipe.
New pipe, okay.
'Cause they put, they put a sleeve in there, they fill it with steam and hot air and attach it to the, I mean, it attaches to the outside of the pipe, and then it hardens on the inside.
Okay, so it diminishes the pipe?
Small.
Slightly, yeah, okay.
But it'll last, it's like you just put in a brand-new pipe.
The nice part about it is like in the Third War and other in-town that are old, it's got the three-foot clay sections of pipe, we have water infiltration. It keeps that from coming into the sewer lines, so.
The roots and everything else.
About the roots, does, is this, is this strong enough that it helps support the pipe and keeps the roots from penetrating?
It's not completely foolproof, they have found where, after you line some pipes, the roots are persistent. So they can get through there, but it's, it's less likely after it's in there.
Okay, when we, I think we have the equipment that will go into the pipe and cut the roots out. How, how can this hold up to maintenance in the future when?
Brand-new pipe.
It's like a brand-new pipe?
This is just a pipe inside of a pipe, so if, whatever this held up to, this is one to two.
All right, thank you.
I thought it was good to see, good to see.
That was good stuff. This spot Kevin's house, right?
Yes.
You want a bag?
No.
They sectioned out part of his sewer, you know?
I just wanted to say the information in the information pack on CIPP for the next four years was excellent. I appreciate Kim doing that, and I also appreciated reading in the highlights where Kansas City checked the manholes that were installed and had a problem with them, called them and wanted them to come back, so I appreciate that effort on behalf of Kim Barmen. Does anybody else have water sewer? All right, Parks Rec?
Yeah, since football practice is over for junior high, does the school reseed that? Are they supposed to reseed that grass?
New city park.
I'm trying to remember that.
Seems like that was the agreement, wasn't it?
I think we, yeah, I think it is an agreement.
I think it was supposed to be, I mean, they're supposed to do it right after they're done with it.
You checked into that?
Sooner be better.
Debbie has a contract, so if it's in the contract, all, okay.
Something else on Parks, I should've brought up when Brian Froggo was here, I was kinda thinking about it, he was talking about green space, needing for soccer fields or whatnot. I think we discussed, maybe a couple of years ago, some of the ponding area down here off the southwest corner of town using that, do you remember that, Kevin?
We tried it, it's-
That's what I was gonna say, was it tried and didn't work?
It's tried, didn't work, it's still so-
Too soggy or rough?
Too rough. So we went in and reseeded it, and I mean, we dissed it, and it was just-
Not gonna work.
It's terribly rough.
You know, they could use that city park though, couldn't they, for green space? Because junior high doesn't use it on size.
Still not very big.
It's still not big enough.
A full soccer field, darn close to what, 85, 90 yards? It's almost as big as a football field.
Well, compared to what they're using now.
It should be, should be same size or bigger.
Is it?
It's just a little bigger.
I know it's wider.
They're just using the depth of the outfield at Bell Field, so it might be bigger.
Might be.
You can ask him if he thinks it might be.
It'd just be nice to get him a space since it's kicking off.
I know, I'm really glad people are using it and coming to town.
Well, I know you get, like, down in speaker there, where you get to the, on 75 there.
On the north side.
On the north side, all that there's in their ponding area there, so. I mean, it could be done, it's just gonna take-
Is it, is it the nature of the soil, or the nature of what? What is it, Kevin?
I don't know what it is, it's just, it's rough and, yeah.
Because it's kinda wasted space.
It is.
It'd be a good soccer field.
It would be.
On Parks, I'd like to also mention that in recognition of Arbor Day, three new trees were planted down there, and somebody, I don't know who the wise person was, we started our own little tree farm. Those were our trees that were brought from across the other side, from the southwest side of the jogging trail, back behind the community garden. That's where those trees came from, but that is, that was so wise, I don't know who started that, because those trees are very expensive and they get a good hold and they're healthy, and they just got moved from there over, we all went down and watched them be planted. What a good idea. Whoever did that, whoever started our own tree farm, kudos.
I agree with you, but I have to correct you a little bit, only one of them came from over there. The other two came from the railroad right away, south of, southwest of 77.
Well, but still, we didn't have to pay for them, right?
No, no, they were volunteers, what they are.
They relocated them.
The one that they planted is beautiful, it's the best one.
Yeah, they relocated them, so.
Yeah, it's great.
So I have to say that.
All right. Moving on, the Cemetery and Airport, we have two promotion requests, one for Wilber Horman and one for William Britton.
Move to approve Wilber Horman to worker two for $13.20 an hour.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh?
Mayor?
Yes.
Doesn't need to be said when to begin? Don't we need to know when to begin? Starting?
He didn't say when they wanted it, so it's not retroactive, so I assume that would be a given for the next paper, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, starting with the next paper? Yeah, there's no retroactive in the letter request. Okay, for William Britton?
Move to approve William Britton to worker two for $13.20 an hour.
Second, to start immediately? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, very good. Anything else on Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire, Chief's coming in.
I have put in your packet about possibly receiving an electronic message board. I sit on the Homeland Security Council, and we're looking at putting one of these in all 23 counties in our region, and they'll be looking for somebody to, if we want one, we can apply for it, to become property of the city of Marysville. We have to insure it, they're worth about $18,000 for them, they're just like you see the DOT uses. If there's a disaster or a huge event, somebody needs to borrow it, we have to allow it to be lent out, but they have to bring it back. But we, it's ours forever, so, you guys have to, I have to get an official acknowledgement to receive it first from you guys. What was the insurance a year, $100? A little over $100 a year to insure the thing, to add it to our insurance policy. It'd be mostly for your street department, or for a big event, stuff like that.
Chief Ackerman?
Hmm?
Are we required to allow anybody who requests of us use for this?
Yes.
Or just in our county, or somebody who needs to...
No, no, you could have a big event in Walmigo, Manhattan, Wichita, wherever, but they, we'd have to let it go, as long as it's not in the surface being used for something. But they could, they could come and get it, we have to release it.
Do we have first priority?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move to approve, I guess, that you submit to receive one, is the way you phrase that?
What we do is, yeah, that's the document to have the mayor sign. Yes, we put in our name on the list, and then our new projects start, this won't be till late 17 sometime, but we have to, we're getting our, the money's in order now, and then we'll do our voting in the spring. As a matter of fact, the city of Waterville is getting a trailer for a stop-lumet trailer, they call it. A 16-foot trailer, solid full of barricades, cones, stuff like that, in case we ever have an event here, we can borrow it as well. Try to get it if I got a bid on that one.
Trying to keep that in mind, right?
Yeah, I tried to get that one, that would have been nice.
All right, so I move to approve, authorize the mayor to sign to put us on the list.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. Thanks, Chief, thank you for your 25 years of service.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, anything else for Police and Fire? Admin and Finance?
Administrator, Administration and Finance Met are committing that as well, as well as with the mayor and Austin, and we worked up an agreement to submit to the Chamber of Commerce further tourism duties. And then Craig Olson will give us the final version.
And it'll be in the packet next, for the next meeting. It's a one-page document, it's pretty simplified.
Take it down to one page. Excellent.
Okay, thanks, Darlene. Appointments and wage determinations, I have one appointment, Karen Hughes has agreed to serve on the Planning Commission. She will do it very thoroughly, she will probably have this memorized before the first meeting, so I would entertain a motion to accept that appointment to the Planning Commission. It's required because Tony Dever has served three years, three terms of three years and has to go off, so his last meeting was his last one.
I move we have Karen Hughes to Planning Commission, committee.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, thank you very much, thank you, Karen, for willing to serve. City Attorney is not here, I am not aware of any executive session. Moving on to roundtable. Wayne already mentioned about the parade and being grand marshals, and we wanted to make sure it was going to be on Broadway. Darlene, you wanted to make sure the...
It will be.
It will be? Do you confirm that? Okay. And the only other thing I wanted to bring up was, if you guys are interested, when we were at the league meeting, I did talk to Eric Smith with the League of Kansas Municipalities, and they do bring training to us if we desire it, so they could bring a coma training to our community, and that way, all our boards and the school board obviously would be welcome too, but it's just an opportunity for them to come here, give the coma training to us as well as all of our committees, you know, library, convention and tourism. I think they could all benefit from having that training. It would be optional, but they said it would cost $500 to bring it to Marysville, so how do you guys feel about that?
Yes, I think we should.
I think it's a good, it's always good to have a refresher course.
It shows that we're interested in trying to comply and trying to make sure everybody gets exposure to this. It saves money because we're not having to let people go out, like to Wichita or Kansas City or Topeka or somewhere, in order to, to get this training. Having it right here and everybody could come, I think that's an excellent idea.
Okay.
$500?
And the county might be interested in attending too.
Right, I mean, I think bringing it here just makes it available for everyone that's subject to it, so is it consent of council to contact them and see when they could come?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, and that is all I have.
Keith? I don't have anything.
Bill?
No.
Darlene?
Oh, one of the workshops that I attended at the Kansas Municipalities League meeting was social media for government, and I think I'll ask Debbie, it's a front and a back, to copy it, because it's got a lot of the do's and don'ts that need to be followed.
The do's and don'ts of social media as an elected official, I think we could all look at that.
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
All right, Todd?
Oh, great things are happening in workforce.
Stolen competition, competition.
I had a lot of really good comments about the new stoplight up here at 20th Street. I personally really appreciate it. I've got caught a couple of times going east and west, but every time I get caught trying to go south and off of 20th and turn on the highway, boy, it's a lot less painful experience than it used to be. And so a lot more people start asking again about when we're going to do the same for 11th Street to make that one a little, I'm sorry, you're right, 11th Road, to make that a little bit safer, and I think this kind of proves the case that you can do it and it won't really impede highway traffic all that much, and it makes it a lot safer.
Yeah, I haven't heard any complaints.
It'll make the traffic a little, a lot easier than what it was.
Is it pressure-sensitive?
It's not pressure, it says like, what'd you say? A line, like a laser line.
Yeah, and if you look, if it's what I think it is, it's looking down right at a specific spot, and the second, something crosses the digital line.
I thought that too, but you'll, I've noticed now if I'm coming down 20th, it'll actually turn before I can get there sometimes. So it must, either has two lines or something.
It's probably, it's pretty smart.
You go by the roll-up doors at Pony Express Auto there, and it'll turn. It's great.
So that stoplight cost is, what, about $186,000? With the sensor? Wasn't it going to be $150?
The sensor, the sensor itself was 32 for all four, and then 100, 100 and, let's see, four-way, because we just discussed this, it was $100,000, I think was a good number when we were talking about the railroad. So 125,000, 130,000 for the, for the...
Four-way?
For the four-way, plus the $32,000 for the sensor.
So maybe $170,000, but we might find it next year. We'll just enjoy this for at least a year, and then we'll vote for that in the budget for the next...
I suggest, before making, jumping to where we're going to put more stoplights, wait for the access management plan to come through.
That's probably a good thing. And maybe they'll recommend it.
I would be surprised.
And get us some funding. Austin, is there anything else?
Funding, that'd be great. That'll do it.
Well, tagging on to that, since this is all new technology in this light, is it set so that it could be triggered by emergency vehicles, since that is the direct path to the hospital?
I'm not sure about that.
It's not?
Nope.
It doesn't have the whole sense?
$2,000 per vehicle to have that option.
I think, I remember we talked about it, I knew it was expensive, so it's not...
$2,000 per vehicle.
Per vehicle?
Yeah.
Okay.
So are there any grants for that?
Will it trigger...
I don't do road勘测.
Will it trigger to read, to take photographs of light runners?
No.
No? Okay. Well, okay, for my turn, I had a citizen ask me if there was some way we could give some consideration to the people that live, like the senior citizens that live in the Elms apartment across from...
Carriage House.